All right. I'd like to welcome you to the October 12th meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. First thing we'll do is come to order. And point call for the members. All right, the first item in the public hearing section of our meeting is Z 2021 2104 RMD Land Development LLC requesting a special permit for LMD Housing Project 50 to 1-bedroom units on property located on Tuboxville Plainfield, MAP 10, block 14A, lot 47, R860 zoning district.
And they have requested to continue to November.
Okay.
Motion?
I'll make a motion to continue the C 2021 2104 November meeting.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye. For the record, that will be November 9th.
Okay. Thank you. The public hearing is continuing. Let's see you next time.
Can you speak up, please? Is your mic on?
It's supposed to be.
I don't know if it is.
Yeah, it's on.
That's better.
All right.
Yeah, even I am having trouble with this one. What's up with that?
All right. Better?
Much better.
So we're going to continue now until next month. The next item is Z 2021 2178 Sangamano Properties LLC requesting a special permit for earth excavation, 1221 Norwood Road, Sessors MAP 5, block 4, lots 42A and 43.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Would you prefer I speak to the microphone? Do I need to speak to the microphone to get picked up on a recording?
I think you're allowed to.
Okay. My name is Damian Sorrentino, Certified Planner and Soil Scientist from Boundaries LLC here this evening representing Joseph Sangamano, who's also in the audience here. Joe may be able to answer any questions related to the operation more specifically than the plan. I'm going to move this forward. We submitted revised plans to the commission based on comments received from CCHA. C. Chuck Eaton is here, a consulting engineer here this evening. First and foremost, for the public hearing, we sent a notice to the property owner within 150 feet of the subject property. This is 1221 and a rear portion of 1253 Norwood Road, that's owned by Walmsley. We sent 13 notices out by certified mail with return receipt. To date, we received 10 of the returned receipts back. There's a copy of the certified slips, the return receipt, a copy of the letter, a copy of the list, and the map is on the revised plan. I want to, before I get into the excavation, I want to step back just one minute and explain a lot line modification plan that we prepared back in April. And you'll see that it's called out on the plan there as reference map, reference map two. I believe two or one. So it's reference map number one. Mr. Sangamano is proposing to buy a 2.74 acre portion of 1253 Norwood Road. This is not part of this evening's application. It's a lot line modification. It doesn't constitute subdivision, but we're not creating any additional building lots. But we prepared this plan on behalf of Joe Sangamano and the Walmsleys back in April. There's a little bit of a holdup with the release from Walmsley's lender that is being taken care of by Joe's attorney and the Walmsley's attorney. So anything you see this evening is kind of predicated, the lot lines that are shown on the plans here are predicated on this actually happening. Because it hasn't happened yet, we actually had Walmsley sign the application for this, so they are co-applicants to this excavation application. So I just wanted to explain that this plan from April is kind of pending. The lot line modification that adds that 2.74 acres from 1253 Norwood Road to 1221 Norwood Road will happen in the hopefully near future. So this evening's application deals with, the reason why I mention that, this evening's application deals with the excavation of that portion of the Walmsley property. So on the lot line modification plan sheet two, again, we'll get into this lot line modification when we deal with the site plan, 1231 Norwood Road. But on sheet number two, the plan set this area right here, that's called out, this 2.75 acre portion of 1253 Norwood Road is currently in process of being purchased by Sangamano Properties LLC and merged with 1221 Norwood Road, see reference map one. So this is the portion that is the subject of the excavation application. Our notification radius was based on the proposed property. So sheet number three is the site operations plan for earth excavation. You'll see how we are proposing to excavate that portion of 1253. There is a little strip of what was 1221 that we couldn't touch in the prior application. We had to hold 20 feet off of a common property line of the butters for any excavation activity. So a small portion of the excavation is within what was 1221, and now we're proposing excavation upon that portion of 1253. So holding that 20-foot setback off the shared property lines of Coramere and the rear property line of Walmsley, Sangamano owns the property to the northwest. We have a total of 53,400 cubic yards on that 2.75 acre piece. We're proposing to hold that 20 feet off the property line, come down to the floor of the excavation at a three to one slope. And all of the stormwater is directed to the northwest corner where you see that post-elevation 150. So we've been involved in this property since Sierra Construction owned it. We did a ground permanent application for Sierra Construction. Mr. Sangamano bought the property from Sierra Construction. Mr. Sangamano did another excavation application for this work here, which has been excavated. And now moving on to a portion of Walmsley property. The details involved in this are established in the notes on this page, all the required information for your zoning regulations is included on this plan. There is no new entrance to Norwood Road. He's going to move the material onto his property where he is permitted to process that material for sale. If you've been in his property, you know he makes a lot of different aggregate products, both from recycled materials and native materials from the site. We have, you know, entering Norwood Road through his existing changed driveway, coming into the excavation area, processing, and the trucks leaving. Hours of operation are the same as we proposed for all of the excavations that we proposed here, Monday through Friday, seven to seven, Saturday, seven to five, Sunday, nine to three, and no operations on legal holidays. A list of excavation equipment is listed in subsection P. Stockpiling and processing of materials shall be primarily on 1221. There will be temporary stockpiling within that area, 1253, as the material is excavated and moved into the processing area. We specify the no finish holes are greater than three to one. We're coming from the existing elevation. This is a very flat area. Let me tune it a little second. There aren't many large trees. It's mostly, you know, herbaceous and shrub-level vegetation on there. There are some, some live tree, but not many. Anything, any mid-large trees that would take, that would take it off-site and dispose of the property will not be buried or anything off-site. Kind of staff, I guess, that we add some recommended best management practices for dust control, so we added those also to the bottom right of sheet three of 72. And that's about what we had for the plan presentation. We did ask for a written waiver of the groundwater monitoring. We are not proposing to go much deeper than the existing floor of the KNH yard, let's say. We did submit exploratory test holes. They're labeled areas, exploratory test holes, number five, six, and seven for this excavation. We were down 25 feet, sorry, 22, 22, 24, sorry, 22, 22, 24 feet, and we did not see any evidence of seasonal high groundwater. We did submit a formal request for waiver based on that. Mr. Sangamano also has an irrigation well over here that's about elevation 154. Static water elevation is about nine feet down, nine and a half feet down when I was there last. So we're confident that the bottom of our excavation is at least four feet above evidence of seasonal high groundwater. We don't want to render this property useless for onsite sewage disposal. There are no sewers down here, so we do want to leave enough soil above seasonal high groundwater to be able to develop this portion of the property in the future and implement it onsite, subsurface sewage disposal system. So waivers, as you know, have to be acted on kind of independently of the decision of the main applications. So we did submit a formal application, request for waiver dated September 13th, 2021, citing the fact that we did the exploratory test hole, that the elevation over the majority of the excavation area is about 168. Evidence of seasonal high groundwater, about 22. The proposed excavation is consistent elevation of 168. Lowest proposed grade within the excavation area is 150, producing a maximum cut of 18 feet. Likewise, a maximum cut of 18 feet leaves a minimum of four feet of native soil above evidence of seasonal high groundwater. So we'll get into, on a subsequent application that's not part of this public hearing, we'll get into a site plan that's kind of up on the hill, which also is going to contribute stormwater to this area. But this, the bottom of this excavation is essentially part of the stormwater management system for the site plan. It's going to be on a regular agenda after this.
Damian, actually, the upper part does have to be part of this because it has enough excavation where it falls under this application.
Okay. Do you think it is part of the whole project, the structure of the project?
Right.
Okay. Now, Damian.
Now, you made a comment, the cross is going to turn up, are you just like, they're tight over here. They got the concrete, they put this, the dry screening is allowed in the residential project. Crushing and things like that are part of the land development district, which is on 1221. I would get, it's a lot by itself. We got solid, some jobs around. The material that's coming off that, if you would look at the material that's off it, is pretty much, I think, a corner process, doesn't have a lot of aggregate in it. So there's no reason for me to really crush over there. Anything that we would bring on, we just rock, we go over to, to brush it. We can screen for a whole day and get a tri- to the rock. So, you know, 2,000 ton, 23 ton rock, if that helps you.
No, just don't check at all.
Yeah, just give us your idea.
He wanted clarification on what he was saying.
Yeah, just give us your idea, and say for material.
Okay, so we need to get the excavation portion of the site plan. The lot line modification plan that's sheet 207 of this plan set is, is a lot line modification that reloads what's 1240, 1241, which is the small red house. You're looking at KNH properties for Norwood Road, it's a small red house on the left-hand side. It's a 16,000 square foot lot, proposing to eliminate the boundary of that lot, incorporate that area into this, this 1221 Norwood Road, and then create a new lot in the back to house a contractor's business. So the site in the back is very rocky, and by rocky, I mean that exposed bedrock is near the surface. We did exploratory test hole there. They're called out, sheet four or seven here, we're showing the exploratory test hole number one. The ledge was 12 inches below the soil surface. Exploratory test hole number two, there was three feet of overburden over the bedrock. Exploratory test hole number three, there was 53. So kind of on this side, as we get down this slope, there's a little bit more soil above the ledge rock. And then, that was exploratory test hole number four, which was 26 inches from the location right there. So in order to make beneficial use of this property, considering the residential nature of the surroundings, we're proposing actually to drop the grade of that site considerably to an elevation of about 176, around there, from an existing elevation of about, average about 190. So we have a cross-section here showing how that ledge removal will be, that dash line on the east-west section and the north-south section, being the total of the excavation. Then it will be built up in order to be able to put stormwater pipes and electrical conduits and all that stuff in the material that's placed on top of the rock. So we are proposing removal of rock over about one acre. Mr. Sangamano's done a little bit of exploration down in this area here. Some of it pulls apart, some of it is fractured enough to pull it apart, given that he has. We are expecting to have to do some blasting here to get that rock material to let it be excavated and removed from that site. So from the floor of his operating area, coming up, up the driveway along the northernly side of the property and into the site plan area, so the front of the building will be kind of exposed to daylight, and the left side, right side, and rear of the property will be, you know, a 1 to 6 ledge, that's this area here. We do have notes on sheet five related to the removal of that rock. The closest building to us is an outbuilding on property, I think it's on Strainer's property. The houses are kind of closer down towards Sofa Road. There is a residential outbuilding, this garage, that's here. But the intent of this, not only to level the site to maybe useful to get Mr. Sangamano material that he can process on this site that is approved under the PDD, and actually to buffer the surrounding area from this huge, you can see on the cross-section, it's really only the roof of the building that's going to stick it up out of the ground. And all of the activity will be down and surrounded on three sides by that rock. So it will really provide a nice buffer. In addition to leaving, you know, 50 feet of natural vegetation around the perimeter of the property back there, all of the heaps will be set down inside of that ledge. So it's sheet number six. So sheet number five are the plans that is the set-up, so it's designed, doesn't really have much to do with this application. In addition to all the notes and operations of stormwater management, et cetera, we do have notes related to the removal of ledge rock in this area here. At the request of the consulting engineer we had, it's more of a storm quality maintenance. But the, I'll give an overview of what's required for the removal of the ledge rock. The contractor is required to obtain permits prior to blasting. The contractor is required to follow all local, state, and federal laws related to explosive demolition of that ledge rock for removal. They're required to do pre-blast surveys. I'm not, I'm not an engineer, I'm not an expert on blasting procedures, but we do have the appropriate notes on here, such that any contractor can be held to them. They do pre-blast surveys, they analyze the condition of things, they identify structures that may be within an area that could be affected by the explosive demolition of the rock. They look at those properties both before and after assess risks and identify if the activity has caused any issues they are responsible, my understanding they are responsible for any containment or anything that would happen. Obviously, for that reason, they try to avoid any of that negative impact from happening. So I just wanted to point out that we do have those notes in there, any contractor. Joe, I think it's in Joe's interest to try to remove that lot line mechanical means to the greatest extent that he can to reduce his costs in hiring a blasting outfit, but when they do encounter rock, and we do expect that it will happen, that they will be held to those standards and follow those procedures that they are required by the board to follow. So the total of the rock, rock removal is about 25,000 cubic yards total material. And Mr. Sangamano has the equipment onsite to take that rock and break it down into a saleable aggregate, can be mixed with other materials that could be sold in a size, but he is approved under the PDD plan for 1221 Norwood Road to actually process that material once. What's your, I might turn around and do a, what's your timeline for constructing that building? Do you do this removal work over the winter? Do you make the building?
Yeah, start construction in the springtime. It's going to take that long because you're building right now.
And this is, the building that's here is all those a little bit different size. It's the same type of building that he just did, his whole store building, and the one out from our best state agency also, they're all the same, same style of building, same manufacturing. So, sure, is that enough information, Brian, about the excavation portion of the site plan? So I think that's covered, bases we have, we're asking for a special permit, we're asking for a site plan approval for that. Later on, we also have a modification. You guys approved the plant development district application about a year ago. We're, I think it's the correct procedure to modify that as we come in and get site plan approvals within that established PDD zone to modify the PDD plan, so I'll save that discussion. Later, we can get into kind of a little more detail on the site plan as far as, you know, grading stormwater, like lighting and these things. But yeah, any questions? Review? No questions?
Does there anyone here in the public would like to speak regarding this application? Any comments from the staff?
All of my comments have been addressed. Chuck, did you have anything to add?
We received plans, revised plans this afternoon, and I re-looked at Damian's letter, but I haven't had a chance to go through the plans.
I'm happy to go through the review comments and our, and our interest in them. I hope you address them if you'd like.
So is there something that you may not have seen that you might want to comment on?
Well, so I can run through our comments. The previous, the previous, the previous material submission did not include a lighting plan. I believe this revised set down includes the lighting plan.
It does.
We had asked for some additional sub-take road control practices, some modifications to the long-term stormwater operation and maintenance plan. The town requires stamped and sealed plans and drainage calculations.
We did receive those.
We had a comment regards to the groundwater monitoring, which I believe Damian addressed, in that those were our five comments. Thank you.
No, I think, I understand what you're going to do. He's looked at first, and lot worked with his property, and we just continue on the next mission. Yeah, and just regarding the groundwater, I think it was whether July was in March. Yeah, when, did they say when they did the tests, towards July?
Yeah, there was, just to read, there's no evidence of groundwater, we're at the other 20, 27 feet. I'm going to go with that.
Anything else, Brian?
No, Chuck's satisfied with the drainage comments, and they did add the stormwater control measures that you had asked for. I don't know if they're exactly what you wanted, but I know they did modify the plans for that.
You feel you can cover the rest?
I haven't, I haven't had a chance to look at the plans. You know, in looking at Damian's letter, you know, he says the paper addressed those comments, and I know he addressed a couple of them here tonight. So it's up to, it would be up to the board. I haven't had a chance to look at the plans, so.
If there are, if there are any additional comments that CCHA has, we're happy to incorporate everything that was asked for, we can get that. If there's details in the wording of things like that, we're happy to accommodate safety
There's not a lot that would change anything.
No, I think at this point, it would be specific, so we're drafting it.
Yeah, and I think, I think probably the, most of the comments are pretty technical. I don't think they would materially change the design. I think the biggest thing would be the lighting plan. I don't know.
Yeah, to let, it's related to the site plan more than the excavation.
Yeah, so we can go over that.
I'm happy to review. We have a lot going on here, I understand that it's kind of hard.
It's kind of mixed them up. It's, yeah.
Right. Well, there are, there's three applications, all the same plants are presented for the same three applications. They're just addressing different issues.
I'm happy to review later, but.
I think we should do the lighting plan under, it shouldn't be part of this, I know.
Let's do it under the appropriate application.
We're just confusing things, really. Let's do it more.
Do you feel like you need to review this?
I think it should be reviewed. I don't think that the comments are going to have significant material changes to the set of plans that you have right now.
It's a pretty large project. I'm thinking that having a thorough review on it from the town side would, I think, open the ears of the town and the area.
Trust that.
It's up to you. It sounds like Chuck is pretty comfortable with what's been presented, and they've agreed to make any modifications as CCHA requests. It's up to the commission if you want to proceed or table or continue.
Your concern is with the light, which is part of the other application, correct? Not this part excavation.
So he had, he had five comments, you know, storage control things, things like that. I don't, I don't, none of that is going to materially change the project.
Chuck?
So, Chuck, if I understand what you're saying, then if the commission approves the application contingent on any subsequent comments you may have that will not change the approval, you're okay with that?
I think so, in this case, yes.
Okay.
I'll also add two is, this is, I'm going to start this thing, but I can give it time for him to make his thoughts.
I think, right, we maybe straightened up the other week.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not.
I've never not worked with the company, whatever, anything that happens.
No, that's, that's not the issue. It's just a matter of, we have a thorough review and everybody's happy with everything. It's a little bit clean, right?
Yeah.
If you can afford, you know, the delay of, till our next meeting, you get this all straightened out.
I'd rather not, because I'd like to get the building ordered because of the way things are right now. The, the longer I wait, the longer it takes to get this up, you know, it's, I don't know if everybody realizes kind of the building end of the spectrum right now, but earlier I can get this, like, I'm going to order this building based on these sites. You guys say go, because I, I have. You guys say go, because I, I, he wants to see it in the building, you know, so. Would it help if I took five minutes and complained to questions and showed you how we responded to them?
Would it help you, Chuck, or? Would you feel more comfortable? You're pretty comfortable with the status of this anyways, correct?
Yes.
So our town engineers are comfortable, staffs are usually comfortable. I'm relying on my experts, and they're comfortable, so.
If there are any things that come up that need to be addressed, we do as condition.
We just have to make sure there's nothing left that goes over here. Any more questions, Ryan?
No, I'm also. Any other comments?
Yes, sir.
My comments slash questions are probably easy answers, I just don't have access to that. My name is Adrian Olson, I'm alternate on the Conservation Commission.
Give us your name and address, please.
Ah, yes, 18 First Street. Adrian Olson, Conservation Commission.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So my first question, I guess I can be heard a little bit easier. My first question is, you mentioned a list of recommended best practices for dust control. I'm just curious.
They're mirrored from, they're taken from previous plans that have been approved by us. But the recommended best practice for dust control for this, number one, reclaim areas no longer being actively excavated, utilized for stockpile or truck traffic. Two, place crushed rock or asphalt milling on truck routes. Three, impose a maximum truck speed of eight miles per hour on truck routes. Number four, strategically locate temporary material stockpiles in area where natural windbreaks such as existing vegetation are present. Number five, keep height of fine grain material stockpiles low. Number six, water active excavation areas and truck routes with water truck and sprayer when necessary. Be careful not to overwater as they can create, as this can create mud that can be tracked off-site. And number seven, outfit dry screening equipment with a water misting system.
I have one extra question. You mentioned also that for the blasting, there were gonna be mold pop. You're gonna have to acquire a permit, and then you have to be complying with the federal and state regulations. Do you have a program manager, a project manager who is on-site insuring it? Or is it a kind of trusting?
The owner is on-site. I think almost all, he works there and he lives there.
Yeah.
Are you OSHA-trained or certified?
What's that?
Are you OSHA certified or trained and able to supervise and ensure that those?
I'm OSHA-trained, and I'm also OSHA asthma. But you would be hired, you'd hire an outside contractor?
That's what I was asking, is if you were to be, or somebody else?
No, it would be, it would be an outside contractor. Maybe Webster Blasting or Main Drill and Blasting. It would be a reputable company, because I can't really afford to have, I mean.
Yes, sir.
Dan, real 20 Dory, I just had a few comments. Everything that the owner has said about building materials and lays, he's 100% right. I've talked to a lot of people, they're trying to get basic things like trailers for landscaping. I know one guy's trying to get steel ball bearings, all that stuff. He's right, the longer he waits, the harder it is gonna get, and it's probably gonna cost a lot of money. I'm just mentioning this just because I think there are gonna be a lot of applications going forward where people run into those issues, so they would probably great a hardship in the next few months.
Thank you for your comment.
There's more to your questions or comments, I don't have time for them.
I make motion to pause public care.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We thank you for your time. Thanks.
All right, we will move on to our regular meeting. Any additions or corrections to the agenda? Any citizen participation, and that is for participation outside of the agenda items? Yes, sir. Just to clarify, this would be something that's, it's just something you want to bring forward to the commission, which is not addressed on our agenda.
That's correct. My name is Howard Haggard, taxpayer and accountant of our funding. I appear to have, this is a regular action. I guess, you know.
Howard, can you have one for the record, please?
Pardon?
Can you have one for the record?
Yeah, absolutely. The reason I'm here is just of, what would these regulations? Try to understand exactly how this, how this works. And I guess my biggest question is, it looks like when they adopted these regulations, amended these regulations back in 2018, when they amended. And a lot of stuff on here doesn't seem like this third-party review was even in force until like 2020. So my question to the board is, did something happen in the town where all of a sudden we're requiring this third-party engineer? Because I've been developing property in the town for a long time, and I've always used local engineering firms, and we've never had to go out for third-party engineering. And I understand the town planner's not an engineer. But, you know, in the past, I mean, I use a reference, we had Louie here, Louie saw it for years. He wasn't a town engineer. But we always seemed to, these guys always came up, looked at the projects, went over the plans, everything. So I guess, you know, my feeling is, every time we do a project in a town, I hire an engineer, a licensed surveyor, and they come in and submit the plans to you guys. And, you know, they're licensed by the state. So I just don't understand what this third-party review, why. And I understand the town's looking out to protect their interests, but it's also the engineer that stands to ordinance. And he's got a liability, and he's saying that he's meeting all the regulations, whether it be from the state of Connecticut or stormwater or whatever it is. So I just don't know if something happened in the town that I didn't know about, that all of a sudden we said, we're gonna do this, require this third-party engineer. I don't know if you guys have been old enough to understand what happened in the past couple of years.
Brian, do you feel that one?
It was just a decision that was made to send everything out to the engineers for review. We don't have the expertise in-house to know if everything is correct.
So, any other, you know, the last thing I tried to talk about this, I lived upon the line, but, you know, the only example, if you spend $3,000 with an engineer, and then he sends that out for review, and I get a bill for $3,300 for the review from the reviewing engineer. I'm like, how can this be possible? That it takes this long for these guys to review this stuff? And then I've ended up coming here for a meeting, we don't even get the results back before the meeting. So I just don't understand, and I just question why I've got to pay two engineers that are licensed by the state of Connecticut, and are putting their stamp on it, their liability, not the town? So that's one question. The other question that I have, and I'm trying to understand, if you go down and you look at the page here, we go down to item number three, where it's engineering inspection for approved occupations. It says 25% of the estimated construction cost. So I talked to Ryan about that, and they're basically saying that's not the total cost of the job. It is basically for the excavation, site work, paving, landscaping. So my question is, when, when does this apply? Does it apply to every applicant that comes before you, whether it's residential, it's commercial? And I just, you know, I gave you an example. If I'm doing a $500,000 project, I've spent $200,000 on the issues that it spells out here. After I pay my engineer to do the design, and I pay a review engineer to do it, now the town wants me to put up, if I spent $200,000, they want me to put up $50,000 and check what's this application approved? So I'm saying, this is like highway robbery. And what controls the third-party engineer? He has no boundaries. I mean, if he knows that there's $50,000 sitting there, well, maybe I'll come up half a dozen more times than I need to and make my review. So all I'm asking is maybe the board looking somehow, when, and it says in here, if you read this, you know, the town plans may be forwarded to the town engineer for coming to review. So if the applicant, if I come in with my drawings, you guys ought to have an opportunity to look at those drawings based on what my engineer tells you, and if you agree with what he says, we don't need to provide a review. If you don't, then you're saying, but not, not even before the, I submit the application, they send this stuff out for third-party review. I don't have a price, no budget, nothing from, you know. And I did a project just recently down here, I went through my application, because after we got the comments for a lousy 2,400 square foot addition, they wanted me to do about $100,000 worth of additional work on a site that you guys approved four years ago when I put up a brand-new building. So now the consequence of that is my tenant can't afford the improvements, so he's moving because he doesn't have enough space to do what he's gonna do. So I talked to the staff about possibly, you know, something added time, if we come in with a full night meeting with these drawings, then send it out to these third-party engineers and let them give us a price. I like to know added time, am I spending 5,000, 2,000, 50,000? In a way that this thing reads, and sometimes tagged on, the last comment, nobody applied this to me, but this 25%. So that's what I'm trying to figure out, when does it apply? Do you guys make the decision, or does the staff make the decision?
We make the decision. That 25% for engineering review fees for inspection fees, that applies to like town roads.
I understand, but I'll tell you exactly what it says, and it doesn't say nothing about town roads. It says with the approved plans for erosion sediment control, excavation, grading, drainage, erosion sediment, paving, landscaping, et cetera. It doesn't say nothing about a town road.
True.
So, and I'm not trying to beat anybody up here, I'm just trying to get it so we get some clarification. Is it just for the town road? That would.
Well, it's for any project that we feel needs to have engineering review, but so far we've only applied it to, only applied it to town roads, if somebody's constructing subdivision.
So I think that's what I'm saying, is that if you come in here, and I'm doing a million-dollar project, I have a million-dollar budget, and I don't know if you're gonna apply this or not, then I come in and you tell me you want to check for 250,000, because I'm spending a million bucks. That's for third-party review, it just seems to me like it's absurd, the number. I don't know, it just seems like a lot of money. But, you know, after you've already paid the third-party engineer, you paid your own engineer, now you're gonna charge 25% of that cost just to have them come out, is that what you're doing? It just seems like there should be some type of a budget or something, get a price from them that says, hey, this is what we're gonna charge, we looked at the plan, you know. If you get somebody that comes in and does third-party testing, when they come in, I get a price, you gotta come in, test my concrete, test my holds, I know the guy that brings the cost. With this view, I have no idea what's the cost.
If I could just add a little bit to what Ryan was saying. We have our engineer to ensure that plans are engineered in accordance with our regulations. And granted, engineers are licensed, they stamp, seal, and sign plans. But nobody's perfect, and our engineer has picked up, as members will remember, items in applications that engineers have missed. Things get overlooked. And our engineer is responsible for ensuring that site plans and special permits are constructed in accordance with the regulations and to protect the town. So that a project isn't constructed, and then subsequently it's found out, oh, it wasn't constructed properly, it wasn't designed properly. Before I came on board, when I took the job, I told the first selectmen at the time, I'm not a town, I'm not an engineer, I am not a PE, I will not review for engineering standards. And members, you know, are aware that the regulations require engineering review for specific things. So we have a consulting engineer. We have not had a town engineer since, I believe it was Mr. Levalle back in the day. And subsequent to him, until our consulting engineer came on board, we didn't have engineers. We had, you know, and that's the concern. The town needs to make sure that the town is protected.
And we are not engineers ourselves.
I understand, I understand, but.
Thing is, sir, I mean, these aren't the regulations. I understand your concern regarding not knowing what you're gonna ultimately have to pay to get the project approved. But we do need to do an engineering review, and the town, you know, needs to get compensated for that review.
I understand, but if you're gonna build a house, would you get an estimate to build a house and know what's the cost for it? So all I'm asking is that somehow these plans go to the third-party engineer, look at, tell me how much it sort of costs for my review. Not give them an open check where they can do whatever they want and send you a bill. For a plan that costs me $6,500 to get it through, it costs me $3,300 to get the plan reviewed. It's just, I mean, it's just, I've been doing this a long time, I've never had this happen. And maybe something happened in the town, that's why I asked the question, why we're requiring this now? But for, as long as I've been in this town, for 50 years, I don't ever recall any major problems happening with an engineer in front of the house or something else that I don't know about happening in the town that all of a sudden. And if you read this regulation, everything in here says plans may be forwarded to the town engineer for review. To me, that implies the board makes a decision whether the plan goes out. So if I come in here and I do a simple house plan, I'm building a roof house.
In order for that to happen, we do push off to a person, because we have to look for them. And so we have to send them over review, maybe two or three months after.
Well, they sent them over later. No, I understand, but I think, I think if you've got an engineer presenting the plan to you, this gentleman's a surveyor, he presented the plan to you, did a pretty good job. If that's a simple application, you guys are satisfied with it, you should be on, say, no, I totally think this needs to be reviewed, this is acceptable. That's all I'm saying. What I'm saying now is, everything here has, and that's why I would know, is that everything has to love review. Because it says to me, everything in here, the plans may be forward. It doesn't say they have to be. So, you know, I'll give you an example, I have an application coming here tonight for a piece of property of the PNC that's already won the weapons. It's already sent out to the third-party engineer, you guys haven't even accepted my application yet. And I'm already gonna get a bill for something that they've done, because I've already sent the comments back. I don't even know if it's gonna get approved. And the last plan, that I withdrew my application, because of the cost of the project, cost me 2,200 bucks to send them a check to the third-party engineer, but I didn't even do the job because it's so cold-blooded. And I'm not trying to burden on you guys.
I understand your concern, you know, this, I'm glad you brought this up, because this is something more softer tonight.
Yeah, I understand, and I just want to bring to your attention.
No, I hear you, trust me. And this was an imperative, demonstrator procedure thing, because of the. And this is a kind of an administrative procedure thing, because of the May. But I think it, maybe it's an issue for further discussion with staff.
You know, these guys, I mean, in the past, every project that I did, these guys came up with a little bit of mind, came up, looked at the, you know, the soil corrosion, make sure we're doing that right, they checked, we got the paving right, that we do this, you know, they looked at all that stuff. So that's why I said, what happened? Why all of a sudden we have to do a lot of changes? As long as it does, it puts a burden, and you're big guys, you've got Amazon, I'm gonna take and afford to write and check. But the little guys, you know, miss the long money. And that's all I'm saying. To clarify is, when does this apply? When you're gonna tell me, hey, we want 25% of your construction cost for a check? But you haven't done that in the past. So when will that, when will that happen?
I think this needs further review by staff. I think they may try to clarify it and bring it back to us.
If I could just add one thing in closing. I did discuss this with the chairman of the commission quite a long time ago, and I asked her, should the plans be sent out to the town engineer? And she presumed that they were being on a regular basis. And I said, well, no, they're not. So she said, yes, commercial plans need to go to the town engineer for review, which is why we've been, when they come in, we send them.
I think that maybe maybe the staff can look into this, try to clarify a few of these points, and maybe we can make something like that in the future.
Yeah, perhaps the, an estimate of the review cost prior to the applicant, you see any? Something along those lines.
You know, and today...
What you're, what you're saying is that you don't know what, you don't know what you're gonna get built.
I have no idea. I have no idea what the intention is. And, you know, you know, what it says here, the one thing is, a $500 fee reviewed shall be paid when time the application is submitted. I never paid that since I've been doing business here. Never, under that application, I never paid that $500. Then it goes on to say, once your application is approved, along with your approval, you will submit 25% of that construction cost. Well, that's never happened to me either. So I'm very happy about that, that it happened to me. But my point is, if somebody else is coming into this town that wants to do business and reads this regulation, I think they're gonna be saying, you know, what are we doing here? So, you know, I appreciate you taking, I think that's what we need to do, is have a little review on this, see if they're out. Because if you knew it was gonna cost you, you know, a review, I mean, you had a major project, and you guys today, you know, this is $20,000, $30,000 review, that may make a difference, but you're making a decision in this town. If it's not requiring somebody, maybe you're gonna build someplace else, if you don't have the data to.
All right. Well, we appreciate your comments, and we will follow up on that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I'll be quick. Dan Real, 20 Doryad, I'm a litigation parlayman by trade, so what I heard, the question is "may." I've worked on a lot of cases where that comes up, the word "may" is permissive, it's discretionary, there's tons of case law on it. The word "shall" is, you know, I'm sort of, I figured, I just heard the discussion, so I'm gonna throw that out there and, you know, bear that in mind. I mean, "may," it's optional. "Shall," you gotta do it.
Okay, thank you.
Adrian Paulson, 18 First Street. So picking back up what Dan Real said, I work in the device industry, and for devices, they use various risk classes to assign levels of scrutiny for their device classification implications. And obviously, they do this on the national level, it's very complicated. On the town level, for something like this, you have the "may," might be possible to assign some kind of risk or complexity classification, you know, depending on how big the project is, how many elements are involved, what kind of risks are gonna be there in terms of what can happen to underlying properties, environment, et cetera. So just kind of pick it back up, you said that something like that, a risk class structure might be used in order, or is, you know, say, in a case where an application comes into play, which can somebody put together a risk class assessment to handle that idea, so maybe that work.
Absolutely. Okay. Just like to close this one out. Any other comments?